It is a special meeting today. We only have one resolution on the calendar. What we're gonna go ahead and do is begin the meeting by standing up and doing the flag salute. We don't have an invocation because it's not a regular meeting, but we will definitely stand up and do the flag salute and then get started.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Brettafield, Councilmember Capriolio,
[00:01:51] Councilmember Chavez,
[00:02:02] Councilmember Olivia,
Vice President Brando,
[00:02:30] and President Soria.
Here.
Great, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. So the only item on the agenda this morning is a resolution implementing a moratorium on fines for violations of water regulations until further council direction. This is sponsored by Vice President Brando and Councilmember Brettafield and the Mayor's Office.
Should I get started then?
Yes.
Alright, thank you Council President, and I want to thank you also for allowing us to have the special council meeting today, and then all my colleagues for showing up. And I promised Councilman Baines I'd be real short. That's gonna be easy to do. I've spoken a lot about this in the last couple of days. So really, it comes down to, after the three-month survey that we entered into with the University of Chicago, we had a lot of complaints in District 2, and we fielded all those calls and began working through them, and then they got to a certain number, and we started passing them on to the Water Department. But it just kinda staggered us how many people we had to work with. Now, granted, some of the calls were based on ignorance, and some of the calls were based on frustration, but... And then immediately after that survey was over, and I remember Mark Standriff telling me, "Just hold tight, it's only three months." But then we got through with that survey, and we began automated monitoring of water usage, and then that generated a different group of people that were frustrated in our community. We heard a whole different round of complaints in District 2. And once the number of complaints got so big, we just started thinking, "We've gotta do something about this." So, one of our ideas was a moratorium on the fines to allow the electronic... or to allow the automated monitoring to go forward and collect all the right data, but to stop the fines until January when council really tackles this issue. So we met with the Water Department and talked with them about our concerns, and I think that we were kind of... had it drafted, and then last week, Councilman Brettafield talked about a district meeting where he had a lot of complaints too, and I thought, "Well, I'm just gonna unveil the water moratorium and ask if you'd like to co-sponsor." So that's what we did. It really is a very simple thing. We've collected all the data from the water survey, and that's being looked at and dissected and disseminated now, and so we're gonna come back with all of that data, and council's gonna meet on that in January. And we're probably gonna pick a pathway going forward that's fair across the city, that's based on conservation. And... but between now and then, we've lost... we've lost the trust, I think, of a number of our residents. And so today, the moratorium is about re-establishing that trust and saying that it was never really about fines. Fines are not that important to the City of Fresno. It was about the conservation program that we're trying to embark upon. So we're gonna... my resolution today with Councilman Brettafield and also the Mayor is a simple moratorium of water fines between October 1st and when council comes back to take action on this in the new year. We decided to make it retroactive to the day that the automated system started, so that was a month ago, and so it'll go back, and if somebody was fined and they paid their fine in that first couple weeks of October, or anywhere in October, it will be credited to their account. So that will be... so anybody after the automated service started will be treated the same. And so this morning, that's about all I really need to say about that. I'll let... I'd love to hear... I know Councilman Capriolio has a personal story on this, and so I'd like to hear from my colleagues, and I'll just make a motion to pass this moratorium this morning.
Second.
Great, so we have a motion by Councilmember Brando and a second by Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Brettafield.
Yeah, I want to thank the council for showing up today. I appreciate, you know, Councilmember Brando bringing forward the moratorium and the support of the Mayor. You know, when we initiated this study, I had a lot of reservations about what the impact would be. It was... but we're all interested in conserving. I mean, this is a precious commodity, water. We all need to recognize, and I think everyone supports the idea that we have to be conserving water. But it was also my understanding that after that study was completed, we were gonna be getting a report to the council before we started implementing anything. Now, I may be wrong about that, but that was my understanding. And then the next thing, I know, I guess, we started this automated system, and all kinds of problems resulted from it. Councilmember Brando mentioned, we did have a district meeting a week or so ago. There's a lot of anger out there from my constituents, I'm sure from other constituents regarding getting fines. People who are very diligent in conserving water, never had a fine before, all of a sudden receiving fines, sometimes multiple fines, sometimes for water use where they haven't even been in the house for weeks at a time, and they've monitored their water use yet they've gotten fines. The second issue has been, you know, trying to reach somebody at City Hall, and they've waited to be contacted, three weeks, four weeks. I understand our folks are understaffed, there's no doubt about that, but not being able to get a response in a timely manner from people is just completely unacceptable, especially when you're sending out automatically fines to their homes. And the third thing is, you know, we have to question the policy, which is why I thought this... all the information data from this University of Chicago study was gonna come back to the council before any decisions were made. We have to determine our policy regarding water usage, and is it flawed? Is it government overreach? Is it too confusing for people? That's what the council and the Mayor have to dig into, these details to determine whether this is the right policy, and frankly, is the automation working as it's supposed to? I have questions about that. I'm not saying it isn't, but I don't know. There's just too many questions about this. So, we need to do this analysis. The moratorium absolutely makes sense. It's the absolute right call, and so I think the council and the Mayor are being very responsive to the people we all represent here, whether you're sitting up here or a city employee. We all work for the people of the City of Fresno. So this is the right call, and I, again, thank the Mayor and our council for being here today to move this forward.
Great, thank you Councilmember Brettafield. So, what I will go ahead and do before I continue on with... oh, I did see now the Mayor punched up. So after the Mayor speaks, we will go out to the public, and then we will continue the debate. So, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to add, I fully support the resolution by Councilmembers Brettafield and Brando, and I spent eight years in your shoes, so I know exactly what you go through, and some of those people that complained, you complain to me still. I had one the other day from a guy I met eight years ago, and he was concerned about informational watering days and times, and I told him, you know, that just look at the utility bills themselves usually cover that information. But we have to remember, the genesis of this is the State of California, and the SIGMA, the State Groundwater Sustainability Management Act mandates that all cities have a water conservation program. And, you know, I think my best understanding of why we had this situation was, one, I think, and I acknowledge we made a mistake, we need to own up to our mistake and correct the mistake, was, one, I think a lot of people assume everybody knew the schedule, and I think there was a lot of confusion out there, particularly, not so much in the days, but on the hours they can use it. The second thing is, there were some people out there that were with only a handful of city staffers visually inspecting, that were being gross violators and watering their lawns and yards, you know, seven days a week, and they got a free pass. And I think the analogy I use at the press conferences is like having a CHP on a radar trap, and at first, they're only pulling guys over that go 10 or 20 over the speed limit. That was the visual inspection. Now the manual inspection, I'm sorry, the automated inspection, everybody over one mile an hour gets a ticket. And I think we should have done... this phase is in, we just really underestimated. The sheer volume was overwhelming, but I think we're on the path the right way. I think over the next three months, we'll analyze the data and determine, you know, for example, you know, we need to focus on gross violators. We need to examine the triggers, 300 gallons per hour. Is that too low? Should it go to 400? I know a lot of people had pools with automatic refills were caught up in this, not knowing how, you know, they're using that much water. So I think it's a step in the right direction, and this is a city that has been very, very progressive on its, you know, and staying in front of its water infrastructure. This council a few years ago passed a water recharge Fresno, which put us in a position, probably the best in the State of California, so this is a step in that right direction, and I fully support it. Hope that wasn't too long, Oliver. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll go ahead and go out to the public. I do have one card. The name is Grace Solis. So ma'am, if you can come to the front, state your name and the address for the record. You will have three minutes. Hold on, is the mic on, please? Is it on?
Feel like I'm doing karaoke. Thank you, Madam President. My name is Grace Solis. I live at 4965 East Madison, Fresno. It's a county island, so I cannot vote for either one of you, but I have many friends who can. We have been... many of us friends have been concerned about this water thing. It seems like everybody I know has gotten a violation at some point or another. I got mine recently. I did email city staff and did receive responses from them, and I spoke to Mark a bit ago about my concerns also. I do have some comments, though, besides the... I think that the gallons per hour should be looked at, but I think it would be more fair to a lot of us if it were averaged out over the month. I know many of us only have a certain day or time that we can water. Not everybody has automatic sprinklers. Many people water by hand, and I would venture to say that it's more your low-income residents who water by hand versus having automatic sprinklers. I think that the hours that you have scheduled for water, for watering outdoor, need to be looked at also. Some of us grandparents get called upon to drop off our grandkids, pick them up from school. We're not even home during those hours. And especially now in the wintertime, arthritis kicks in. It's cold out there, to be out there before 9:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m. when it's dark already. It... I think it's just some things that I would hope that you would take into consideration when making your final decision about the watering. I got answers to some of my other questions from Mark. He was helpful in that regard. But I would particularly ask you to look at the hours that you are allowed, and some sort of system of measuring out our water consumption through an average daily use versus one hour a day, you know, type thing. And that's basically what I wanted to say to you this morning, and I thank you all for giving us the opportunity to say something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? If you can state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes, sir.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Ed Falcone. I live at 1154 East Cole Avenue in Fresno. I agree with everything that's been said. I mean, conservation's very... water's very precious, and we should be conserving. I agree with all that. I guess my biggest frustration is the lack of getting response to phone calls. But the other thing that also kinda frustrates me is that, the couple times that I have talked to some of the personnel from the Water Department, they tell me, "Well, did you check for leaks? Did you do this?" "Yes, I've done all that." What kinda frustrates me is that they've never said, "Well, come on, take a look at your water meter. Maybe there's something wrong." I mean, I know when they first installed the water meters, as well as like the gas meters that were put in, there was issues with them. I mean, the one reading they got was one day, they said, "I used 100 and some odd gallons in one hour." We weren't even at home. And when I come... when I came back home, I mean, if there's 100 gallons that was used, it's gotta be somewhere, so I'm looking. There's nothing around the house where, you know, there's 100 gallons of water that were being wasted. So that's kinda where I'm frustrated, is if, you know, please consider that maybe there may be something wrong with the equipment or something, or have it checked out. I mean, don't just say, "Hey, it's, you know, maybe it's your guys, you got leaky faucets and that, because I've checked everything, and I don't have a problem there." So that's all I would ask, is please consider everything, including the meters. Have it all checked out, make sure it's working properly. That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If you can state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
All right. Good morning. My name is Esther Perez Martin, and I live at 5869 East Dwightway, to County Island here in Fresno. And unfortunately, too, I got cited for using a number of gallons of water, and I don't remember using the water at that time. I didn't even know if we were home either. But in any case, months ago, I had somebody from the City of Fresno come out and check for leaks, and we did find one pipe that was leaking, and so we repaired that. And so my concern is, some of my neighbors are also retired, like I am, and they're a little bit older than I am, and so I think it was already mentioned by Grace Solis about the timing, and a lot of these people have health issues coming out in the morning, and then they're concerned about their safety. So if they come out too early, they don't know who's wandering in their neighborhood, or late in the evening if they come out and water. So their concern is coming out. So they try to water in the middle of the day when it's warmer for them, and it's more convenient, and they feel safe coming out. So I think you need to consider... I know there's a lot of seniors in the City of Fresno now, and a lot of us are retired, and so we conserve. As a matter of fact, I put a slab of cement where we used to have grass, so we've conserved as much as we can as well. And so we're conscientious of the effort being made by the city and also colony residents. You can tell by in our neighborhood, if you drive around, a lot of our grasses are dry now. And so it's not that we don't care about conserving. We just want to make sure that it's fair and equitable to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the public who wish to comment on this item? If you can state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Sean Stewart. I live in...
Can put the podium a little bit higher with the... on the left-hand side.
Thank you. My name is Sean Stewart. I live at 5252 East Appaloosa, Clovis, California, 93619. I did want to share, just from my experience in working with Newmark Pearson Commercial, since I've seen some of the GSA legislation. I do think for a period of time, the public was allowed to develop their own governing body to negotiate, solve the stipulations that are required in monitoring the use of the public water. So in saying that, I think that it's a lot of time, effort, and consideration that's all involved with this, and if the public is able to stand for themselves, I think that they would have greater say and should be able to take responsibility for that.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? CNN will bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Olivia.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you especially to the maker of the motion and the second, and also to our Mayor. I know that this was... this is one of those things that I talk about here at the City of Fresno, if we perceive a problem or an issue in our community, that council members are very lithe and available to people, and able to change a bad policy and reverse course or to initiate a good policy, a fix of some sort. So I commend our, again, the... my council colleagues and our Mayor for sitting down and working this out. I also have had some concerns about this. In fact, I think that when I voted against this whole thing a few months ago, I said, "Let's not make war on our constituents. Let's not make war on the people who are the final users of the Department of Public Utilities." And I remember people down there laughing at me, and now we're not laughing anymore because it was a declaration of war against people in the neighborhoods, and they have come back, and they have let us all know that they don't appreciate that. So I appreciate you bringing this fix forward. I think that, you know, something like this should have never happened, but I'm hopeful that, you know, I'm not gonna be here, but I'm hopeful that the City Council, working with the administration, can work this out in a way that's agreeable to everyone, the people in the neighborhoods, as well as state law. Now, I just... I had a couple of questions, or I need to understand, because I was part of this council when we voted for Recharge Fresno, which was the largest fee increase in the history of the City of Fresno. And this was something that I believed we had to do. It made me very, very uncomfortable because I don't like to pass these costs on, but we were in a situation where the state was mandating we change things, and the city was running out of water, and the wells were being declared poisonous, and so something had to be done. And I don't think that Recharge Fresno was a knee-jerk reaction to the problem. I think it was a very well-thought-out, very well-prepared, well-engineered answer that will serve people in our community for decades and decades and generations. So I was not happy to vote for the increase in fees for water in our city, but I'm satisfied that we're all going to get there together, and it's going to be a worthwhile use of that money to bring Fresno into compliance with state law and to, again, guarantee water for people for generations in the future. Now, the question that I have for whoever wants to answer it, and I don't think it has to be Mr. Carvahal, I think that maybe somebody on this dais, and perhaps even Mayor Brand. So, the question is, if Recharge Fresno is supposed to guarantee a water supply for the future, am I incorrect in assuming that that meant plentiful water or an unlimited amount of water? And Mr. Carvahal, maybe you are the guy to help me out. So I voted for this, and now everybody's rates have gone up, and was this vote to raise the water rates to guarantee... I mean, now we're harnessing water, surface water, right? And we've got a surface water treatment plan. We're doing things we've never done before, and we're not relying on groundwater. Were we supposed to have more water access? Were people in the neighborhoods, the users of DPU, supposed to have access to more water with the new?
So I would say that Recharge Fresno doesn't bring more water to Fresno. We have historically paid for and accessed water out of both San Malkeen and the Kings Rivers, and we have been utilizing... before Recharge Fresno, we utilized that to recharge our aquifer so we could pump that water out of the ground and deliver it to our customers. And so what we've looked at historically over time was that by operating our wells, we could not put enough water back into the ground to recharge the aquifer. We saw groundwater levels decline by over 100 feet during the last 80 years. And so the investment in Recharge Fresno infrastructure was to better be able to utilize those available surface water supplies that we had been investing in, that we had been paying for, and be able to directly treat that water, deliver it to our customers. That allows us to preserve our groundwater, put more water back in the ground, because we know we're gonna go through very severe droughts in the future, just like we went through back in 2014, 2015, and we will then have a water supply to pump out of the ground, deliver it to our customers. So it's a balanced approach of utilizing surface water, maximizing its use when it's available, and then being able to preserve our groundwater, rely upon that during future periods of drought.
But it didn't mean more plentiful water.
Right. It didn't mean that we were going to do away with our outdoor watering schedule. And in fact, the state since then has enacted the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. They have passed new legislation, SB 606, AB 1668, which provides for more stringent water conservation regulations going forward. And I think if you summarize all this together, you know, the investment in Recharge Fresno, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, the governor's mandates towards further water conservation ensures that Fresno will have sustainable water now and into the future. It doesn't mean that we can utilize, you know, we can just water seven days a week.
Well, and I appreciate that, and I think that I'm satisfied with that answer, and I do, but I think that there may be an element of the public who thought, "Well, our rates are going up. There's this thing, Recharge Fresno." I realize that the previous administration did a lot of outreach to the community, and they did a lot of public relations work to try and get people informed, but I think that... I think that the... and I think the member Brando and Brettafield and our Mayor have kind of figured this out, that in the eight years that I've been here, I mean, and I realize it's to comply with state law, but it was, okay, first the water meters have to come in, and people didn't like that. And then the... you know, Recharge Fresno comes in, and the rates go up, and people don't like that, but it seems to me that no matter how many little mailers we put in the envelopes of the bills, it's such... it's so much for people. It's so much for people even without these fines. Even if we never find anybody, it's still a lot with the rates going up and with the meters coming in, and it's all been so foreign to people, and I know you understand this better than I do. I'm just trying to relate the things that come to me as a city council member when people become frustrated. You know, I've had people waving their fines at me, and I don't think that as we proceed in this, we can be draconian. I mean, I guess this is the question for the maker of the motion. When the moratorium is over, then what do we do? Are we back to blasting away at the people in the neighborhoods, or what's the plan for when the moratorium ends?
So my thoughts are that when we get together in January...
Thank you, Mr. Carvahal.
And the Water Department and the administration come up with a plan. They're gonna do what they always do. They're gonna present it to council, and you're gonna have myself, yourself, if you're still here when we discuss it, or probably after you're gone, but you'll have seven of our colleagues.
I'm trying to find a legal loophole so I can stay.
I think you're out of luck, but I'm not an expert.
I've got like 85 days to find one, and I will.
The voters would have to reconvene. But the seven of us, you know, we're all hearing from, in some cases dozens, in some cases hundreds of constituents, okay? And so I think I've heard from several people who made good suggestions today. Yesterday I was on the radio, and three or four calls, it's like, "Wow, we need to maybe look into that suggestion." So I think we'll all do our due diligence, and one of the reasons... one of probably the silver lining in this problem that we've had the last couple of months is we're gonna be paying really close attention to the final needs of the residents when this gets rolled out in January. So until then, we need to put the brakes on the fines, regain some trust, and move forward.
I appreciate that, your remarks. I appreciate them very much. So the final kind of couple of questions that I have, that I've been taking notes, and if you could come back up, Mike. In Bakersfield, what are they doing? Are they in complete contravention of state law in Bakersfield that they don't have? Are you familiar with their watering schedule? I don't think they have one, and I'm wondering how we can get to that place where folks in Fresno can just... we... can we get to a place where we can conserve and meet our goals and be more permissive in allowing individuals to decide when to water, like Bakersfield?
Well, in terms of Bakersfield, a number of their customers... I think Bakersfield is split, but Cal Water is a large service provider in Bakersfield. Cal Water also provides water service in Visalia, in Selma, and I think a lot of their systems vary. I do know, in looking at Cal Water's website, there is time-of-day restrictions on outdoor water use
Yes.
in Bakersfield. In Visalia and Selma, they have similar watering schedules to Fresno, three days a week during the summer. They do restrict during the middle of the day. They do restrict during the middle of the day. Selma is very clear about theirs in terms of, you know, no, no adding to or refilling your pool, you know, outside of the watering day or watering hours. So, you know, i- in terms of Cal Water, I think it depends on the, on the, the city that they're providing service in and what that city has approved. But I'd, I'd say that, you know, a number of their systems do have outdoor watering strict, restrictions. They just kind of vary from city to city.
Well, it would be my wish that, that this, this group could look for ways to be more permissive and to allow individuals to make decisions. I think that you won't be, find yourselves in a situation, you know, where the, where the fines are going out and, and, and folks are being affected that way. I guess that's, that's pretty much all I have. I just wanted to, to thank the, the maker of the motion. I'm going to support it. But I think that as we go down the road and, and in the future, I think it's important to keep these things in mind. I think that the watering days and stuff are, are confusing to people. I think that if, if, it would be wise for us to take good ideas out there and try and find different ways to do this because, look, this is, this is not an affluent city. There are affluent parts of our city, but it's not an affluent city. When someone gets a fine like this, I mean, I know lots of folks in my, in my district, they're just not going to pay it. And I think that it's, it's important to find different ways to get folks to comply and to get folks to understand, maybe we drop the, the days of the week thing and we just go to times a day. Maybe that would be easier. But I'm, I'm interested in finding creative solutions for this problem because, you know, I want the city to be in compliance with what the state wants to do. But I also think that because we're Fresno and because we're unique, we have a unique group of people who live here, I think that we should find a, a unique way to address water conservation in our city that doesn't involve bringing the hammer down on people and getting one of these unhappy notices in the mail if they make the mistake of watering on the wrong day. So I, I thank you, DPU, for your help in answering those questions and I'll be happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brettafeld, I know that you had a question for Mr. Carbajal.
Mr. Carbajal, just a quick question, follow up. You know, the gentleman came down and, you know, is raising the issue about water meters and how accurate, how, are you 100% accurate that all the water meters out there are not giving out erroneous information? Because I've heard that too, that people feel like maybe the water meter in some instances is, is giving off erroneous information.
Yeah. And anytime we hear that the water meter is not accurate, we are willing to and we, we have tested a number of meters out in the field. We can field test them and make sure that the meter is working accurately. I think we've tested 111, about 111 meters since the beginning of the year, residential meters. And, you know, there are a few that under-report. That's typically what we see. We, we don't typically see meters over-report. They will, they will under-report as they age. So really to the customers an advantage that having an older, under-reporting meter. But, you know, for the most part, these meters are, are accurate and the reporting system is, is consistent with what's being used out, you know, at the, by the customer. But, you know, the system's been in use since 2012.
Uh huh.
And so we have been using it since that time. As we transitioned over to automated enforcement, yes, a number of complaints questioning, you know, the, the meter reads and their accuracy has gone up. But in all cases, we are willing to go out there, meet with those customers, test the meter, run the system, go back and verify that it is performing as intended.
You haven't run across instances where the meter was over-reporting?
The, the only one I'm aware of is where we received a meter from the manufacturer, we installed it, and the register and the meter weren't, you know, the, the, the meter it's, it is, it, they vary by size and the register has to be aligned with that meter. So we have one instance that I'm aware of where the manufacturer sent us a meter that had the wrong register on it. Customer complained. We went out there, we inspected. The, the goal was to test the meter. What we found is, hey, this has a wrong register on it. That's the only instance. We have 115,000 meters. That's the only one I'm aware of. And so we sent that back to the manufacturer and said, "Hey, you know, these two don't go together." And so we replaced the meter, resolved the situation.
Okay. And did, the total number of fines that went out, total number, what was that number?
So what's been mailed and billed during the month of October, mailed and billed covers the first through the 17th. So there have been, you know, we have recorded water use in excess of 300 gallons in an hour, but we have that, that has not been submitted to the billing system and then they bill through cycles. So that, that hasn't gone out. So first through the 17th, we have 20,500 notices that went out to customers. Now, out of those, out of that 20,500 notices, there were 1,840 of them, contained a $50 fine, 1,100 had a $100 fine, and 1,146 had a $200 fine. So the, so the majority of those, over 16,000, were first time notices that went out. That's a warning to tell our customers that they exceeded 300 gallons in an hour and, you know, that weren't consistent with the watering schedule.
Okay. Do you, do you know what that total is? You know, that monetary wise that was sent out? I know you got the 1,850 at 50 and-
Yeah. So, so what went out from October 1st to October 17th in terms of, of fines, if all of those fines were to be paid, it would be over $400,000.
Okay. All right. Thanks so much, Mike.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you. Mike, I'm going to have a couple of questions for you. I too didn't vote for the pilot program. I had those same concerns when we met. I voiced some of those with you. And the reason I didn't support the pilot program, it reminded me a lot about the PG&E transition to electrical automated meters when we did that. And that had a lot of issues. And so I think going forward, I think we're going to have to really look at, at what that data is because especially in, in districts like mine, and I know in districts like Councilmember Olivia and Councilmember Soria and Baines, we have lot sizes that vary from block to block. And, and the reason I know that is because when I was growing up in southeast, we had fruit trees in the back that we used to cook, like lemons, we have peppers, we have tomatoes, oranges. And so I think for me, we need to take into account the history of the usage of that lot size and, and accordingly approach it in that way. But I did have a couple of questions because I was a little bit confused when I read the pilot program initially. So right now, as it is, what are the, what are the measures or the goals that we have as a city mandated by the state right now? What's our mandate along the lines of water conservation?
What is the mandate right now? The mandate is to develop an urban water management plan and we have specific conservation goals outlined over the next, every five years.
What are those? Those are the ones I want to know.
I, I don't know off the top of my head what the, what the exact number is, but it's achieving a certain percentage of conservation. It's in our urban water management plan. You know, that's something we can definitely break out and, and present to you. That was, that was put together back in June of 20, I, I think June of 2016, I think is when it was adopted by council.
Okay.
And so we, we update that schedule, I mean, that document every five years.
And, and I, and I like to get those. I like to get those conservation goals.
Definitely.
The follow-up question to that is, is the city of Fresno, the measures that we're trying to implement align with those goals or is it beyond what those goals are for water conservation?
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't think it's beyond those. I think that, you know, we've had a water, an outdoor watering schedule going back more than two decades. And, you know, our enforcement methods, while well-intended, you know, weren't very efficient. And being one of, being a city that, that installed meters more recently as opposed to cities that had meters going back decades, you know, we were able to install meters and have an automatic read system, which meant we didn't have to go out and manually read 115,000 meters. It also meant that, you know, gave us opportunities to utilize that system that we've invested in to encourage conservation and to utilize the system to enforce our outdoor watering schedule. I think what we've, we've learned some lessons today. I think we need to make some adjustments. Our mayor has outlined those very well and we're willing to take a look at that and make some adjustments so that we can not only achieve our conservation goals, we can make the best use of the systems-
Sure. So to understand this a little better, Mike, and, and just want to kind of bottom line it. So are, have, has the city of Fresno, since those goals were outlined, met or exceeded those conservation benchmarks?
Yes, we have been, we have been meeting those benchmarks. We are seeing water use go up since the drought, but I don't think that was, you know, I, I think that was anticipated and not necessarily out of line with our conservation goals. But, you know, those, those conservation mandates, just as, as we've seen new mandates get adopted within the past year, those will get incorporated into our future planning documents and we will continue to move down the road implementing water conservation.
So if we were, so if we were meeting those goals, what, why the need to have this additional conservation measure? That's what I'm not clear on.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, we didn't, you know, we modified the, the ordinance in terms of refining, you know, the watering schedule in order to utilize the, the automated read system. You know, that was done back in 2017. That was in anticipation of the state mandates that were adopted during, during the drought and have been now approved just this year. And so I think those go in line together. This is an opportunity to, you know, to drive further conservation with outdoor watering. We, we've known that's an opportunity that's existed for quite a period of time. But I think this is relatively new in terms of utilizing the system for automated use. And so it needs some refinement.
Sure. So last question. So right now, the data that the city of Fresno have, can we track what a specific parcel, i.e. customer, has used and how far back can we see that history of their water usage?
How far back? I'm going to look back at our staff. How far back does it go? Can we look all the way back to 2012? Yeah. So we implemented the system back in 2012, so we have a history that goes back to that point.
Okay. So that'll give us a full picture of what that looks like.
Yeah. It'll give us a picture of, of what we have read and billed on a, on a monthly basis. I don't know how granular that is, you know, how, how well that's archived. And what we're looking at now, what we're, the information that we're utilizing for outdoor enforcement is hourly meter reads. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure that we archive hourly reads. I, I do know that we bill off the system and so we have monthly reads for billing purposes.
Well, and that's, that's the information, the data I'm going to want to look at when we come back for that. Because we have a lot of new developments that are obviously more, more dense. And then right across the street, there's, there's bigger lots that obviously use a lot more for landscaping, for, for fruit trees, for vegetables and that type of thing. So I'm, I'm going to want that, that data, that, that information, the historical usage. Thank you.
I think I'm next on the, on the board there. So first I wanted to thank the people that came down here today out of your busy schedules to tell us how you feel about this and what your opinion is. Thank you for being here. And thank you, more importantly, because you wouldn't be here if you weren't water conservation people. So your conservation efforts, we appreciate it. And I want to thank everyone in the city of Fresno for their water conservation efforts. I think the vast majority have complied with the request for water conservation and will continue to do so. So now we have a few that have not been able to do so or don't quite understand what we're trying to achieve here. So now we're going to go into a phase of breaking that out and explaining to people and making adjustments so we can continue to conserve. This is, this is not an overnight solution. The droughts come and they last. So we have to be prepared. And I think Director Carbajal gave a very good explanation of the state requirements and our own requirements within the city of Fresno. So I, I really wasn't going to speak, but my colleague here called me out on the story and I think he was on the radio with it. And so my story, when I got my water bill a few years ago, I couldn't read it. It had HCFs, which was, I think Mike said, 710 gallons per HCF. And I'm not a math genius by any means, so I, I didn't really understand that. So I met with the Water Department, I said, "We need to break that down so the citizens can understand it. So can we do it in gallons?" And I would suggest average gallons per household and then the individual house, here's what you've used. And that way I don't, I would understand where I am with my water conservation efforts. So we implemented that in the bill. And if, when you get your bill, look for that. It's really important. So with that in mind, I got my bill last month and the average household, I'll maybe a little bit off, but the average household used 20,150 gallons for the month. My bill showed that I used 15 gallons, 20 a month. So I saved, I call it water banking. So I felt I water banked 5,000 gallons. I, I do that every month, not that same number, but we always go under except when I drain my pool. But anyway, so we always try to be conscientious of that. And I was telling Steve my story and what happened was I got a notice that I was in violation for one day of the month. I think I was at 600 gallons. And so I was concerned because I, I didn't understand why I would get a bill, or warning rather, when I save 5,000 gallons. So I was concerned about that and, and I met with Director Carbajal and his staff members. And so we were trying to figure this out and we came up with a lot of good ideas to put into the hopper so we can refine this technique and make it better in the future. Maybe averaging the month, if you save 5,000, maybe you'd have a leeway of 500 gallons or 1,000 gallons or different things like that that we're working on. So we're definitely working on that and we're going to have a solution. We'll have it probably before January and we'll have to, we will have everyone here to, to vet it out and have your opinions and concerns. So, so that's kind of my story and I'm, I'm not going to quit conserving. I appreciated the notice. I didn't realize I had a day that I went that high, but, so that's, that's my story. And I was, I was concerned and that personally brought it to my attention as well as some of my neighbors and good friends. So with that, we are able to meet and confer and we're making differences and changes. One of my colleagues asked about, I think it was Member Chavez, "If you look for, Director Standriff, is it called Eye on Water? Can you tell us about that for a second?" So if you really want to know what your daily water usage is, we have a way to do that. And Mark met with a client of mine, or a client, not a client, but a constituent, and we discussed this with her to explain how this works. So Mark, do you have some advice there?
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio and Council President members. I'm Mark Standriff, Director of Communications and Public Affairs for the city of Fresno. A while back earlier this year, we actually introduced what we think is a very exciting new, not only mobile application, but online portal called Eye on Water. That's E-Y-E-O-N-W-A-T-E-R. And this gives our customers the opportunity to, when they, when they input their account number, their utility bill account number, they can actually monitor water usage and see the same exact data that the Department of Public Utilities can see it. And virtually in real time because those statistics are updated every six hours. So that way you can follow along to see, you know, overall, you know, is, am I conserving as much as I want to? Or more importantly, we have a leak detection alarm that you can put on. So if you're using, let's say steadily 10 gallons of water an hour, every single hour, there must be a leak in your system. Then we can send somebody out there from our water conservation staff to actually take a look, to analyze what's going on in your property and detect where the leak is. These are all very important tools that we give our customers so that they can, whether they have a computer or a smartphone, they can keep track of their usage. And more importantly, if they see something that spikes up out of nowhere, some kind of watering that happened, that indicates some usage that they hadn't planned on, then they can reach out to us, be proactive and we can kind of help solve the mystery. And that's really what we've been all about ever since we first brought this, this new technology online.
Well, yesterday I thank you again when my constituent called in and we got on the phone with her and you took her through the, the mystery solving process. And she was very appreciative and I thank you for that. And I, I recall her issue is her swimming pool in particular.
We're, in fact, in, in our conversations with our customers, ever since the beginning of the automatic notification of fines at the beginning of this month, we're finding that there's a, a significant number of people who just don't know what they don't know. And one of the big things is that they don't know that outdoor watering also includes refilling your pool. It also includes hosing down solar panels. It includes, you know, watering fruit trees or any number of other activities that have nothing to do with- nothing to do with the actual irrigation of your lawns. And so, you know, in those opportunities, we try to tell them, hey, you know, here's a chance for you to understand what the regulations are, and more importantly, to be able to fill up your pool, but do it at a time and a day where the water regulations allow you to do that. As far as, and there's always been a law on the books, that if you drain your pool completely, you have to notify the city, and then we'll give you a permit to be able to refill the entire thing.
Well, that's exactly what happened to me, and I called the city, and they were very gracious in permitting me to drain my pool and refill it, so I had that on my bill. And other than that, we've been working together and keeping that volume down. So, you know, thank you again for talking to my voter and constituent. She was thrilled when we got off the phone. In fact, she called my office later and thanked us again.
That's very good.
I didn't get a chance to tell you that yet, but, so thanks. So there's a way to understand and solve these problems, and we're going to work on it, refine it, and it's going to come out very well. So, with that, I want to be sure and remind everyone, though, that today is the day that we go to one day a week watering, one day a week. So mark that on your timers, on your sprinklers. So, odd-numbered days are Saturday, even-numbered addresses are Sunday. Odd on Saturday, even on Sunday. And of course, again, no watering between 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. But after that, you have the ability to water and take care of your properties as we all want to do and keep our community green, but we want to be flush with water for our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a couple other councilmembers punched up. So, Councilmembers Brandow and then...
Yeah, you know, listening, Council President, listening to all the different conversations, fantastic. So I want to add to my motion to adopt this moratorium, a direction to staff to clearly communicate that in the next, until council deals with this in the new year, to direct staff in our utility bill to please explain that council is passing today a moratorium on fines effective October 1st, if indeed it passes in a few minutes. So that, to begin to rebuild that trust with those folks that have been very angry and frustrated, just let them know that we're hearing from them. So, something along the lines that this action was taken by council on such and such a day, and then moratorium would be in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olivier.
I think that, and I thank you, Council President. This is the last time you'll hear from me today on this issue. But why can, why are we going to one day a week when our neighbors in Clovis get to water two days a week during this period? I'm curious about that. Why, I mean, are we that, is the water crisis so critical that we have to go to one day a week?
So typically, this time of year, you know, the climate changes, and the watering needs of landscape typically drops off at that point, and one day a week is generally sufficient for outdoor landscaping. And we've had this schedule going back, one day a week during the winter, going back more than two decades.
What would happen if we changed that? What if we went to two days a week?
If we go to two days a week during the winter?
Be less people will be fined if they have more opportunity to water.
Right. I think, you know, fines would go down, but water use definitely goes up. The more watering days we have, you know, the higher the consumption is.
But if they pay for it, if they're paying for it, can we supply it if they're paying for it? I mean, to me, the check on someone wasting water is the bill. If, I mean, we can fine and we can send out people and we can do things to try and get people to stop using water. We can do TV commercials and put little leaflets in our bills. But to me, the ultimate check on water wasting is the monthly bill. He's going to say to his wife, "Hey, look at this bill. You're wasting water. We can't afford this bill." So, to me, if we were to go to two days, people would pay for the water that they use, and maybe by us adding an extra day and being more flexible, then people could avoid fines. I mean, if this council were to vote to go to two days, could, do we have the water to supply them with that?
I think these are all things we will look at. You know, is the hourly threshold the right number? Are the days per week, you know, can we adjust those? Is the fine structure adequate? What's the least impact we can have? I think these are all things that we are willing to consider during this time period.
And I thank you for that. You know, Councilmember Brandow and Bretifil, I would love to see it go to two days a week. I think that would be, I think people would appreciate that gesture, but I won't ask the maker of the motion to include that as part of the motion. Again, DPU says they want to look at it, but I hope that when we come back, I, because that's what we hear. That's what we hear. That's what I hear. Why are we going to one day a week? I want to water two days. We, I think it's important to remember that the final check on water wasting is that bill. So the rate has gone up, and we voted for that, and the rate has gone up. And so, I think that that in and of itself, hopefully, would be enough to get folks not to waste water. But I think, I think going to two days a week, like they do in Clovis and like they do in other cities, I think would be an interesting and a prudent thing to do in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Bretifil.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I concur with what Councilman Olivier is saying. I feel we get to be too restrictive. I feel like we often overreach. There's a lot of control, and if our neighbors in Clovis are able to water twice a week, I'm not sure why Fresno residents aren't able to as well. And I've always felt that the one time a week seems pretty restrictive to me. So I just think when we, this comes back in January, I think this is the debate we need to have, because I do think it is really restrictive, and I'm always concerned about government overreach. And I think once a week seems quite restrictive, particularly when other people in other communities do not have the same restriction, and it is true, they're going to be paying for the water that they use, and that has a way of restricting use in itself. So I look forward to that discussion in January. It needs to be a part of the discussion. Thanks.
Thank you. So the screen is clear. I will keep my remarks very short. I appreciate my colleagues for bringing this resolution forward. I think that there is time needed for our city staff and us to understand how we can better serve our community. So I'm happy to support today and look forward to hearing what we can do to ensure also that the public gets the information. I know that the leaflets in the bill is a good way, but I think that we also have to think about doing maybe additional outreach in terms of through media commercials and so forth. So I know that, and hopefully, that's something that we could work on together, both for the English-speaking community as well as for the Spanish-speaking community, maybe even the Monk community. I know that there's avenues here locally that we can use to make sure that folks are informed, not only about the watering schedule, but I think about various ways of conservation so that we can continue to push that forward. But I look forward to hearing back in the next couple of months how we can better implement our water conservation efforts here in the city of Fresno. So with that, we'll go ahead and take a vote. There is a motion that was amended to give direction to ensure that the public or the, I guess, our customers know that we have taken action today and that the fines won't be issued until we bring back to council a plan. Yeah, we can do electronic vote. Did you, are you okay with amending that motion? You were the second to the motion. So perfect. So we'll go ahead and take an electronic vote. Passes unanimously. Great. So, there's a motion to adjourn, and this is it for today. Thank you, everyone, for being here.